To Tim Wood, we're going to talk about the USA consent decree we have in Phase Two. And I'm gonna suggest, he wants us to move over there at the table. So let's go over there, take.
Well, that is, you can slide one of the black chairs so you can see the deal here. Where do you want to?
Oh.
Oh. Oh. God's sake. Okay. Before Tim starts, I just want to tell you that they've been working on coming up with different options for the sewer plant. Whether it's high rate treatment, fixing some things to this plant, or doing the whole plant. And they're gonna, Arcadis is gonna be coming in July to give you the full picture of depending what option gets picked, how much it's gonna do to the rates. But we still have to do sewer separation too. So it might be that we work out a new deal with Arcadis to where we do the renovation and we don't do any separation for four or five years. I don't know. That's up to Arcadis to sell to the EPA. But Tim's gonna go through it. Picture show here is what is what. And then it won't need to go to finance, or you can send it to finance tonight. But Arcadis is coming in July to kind of go over.
They'll come to a service meeting or to a regular?
No, I think they'll come to a committee meeting.
Committee meeting?
Yeah. I've been thinking, don't you? That way, there's more time for them to go through it.
Okay.
You know? But we'll let you all know when that is. But Tim is the expert out there and I'll let him go on with it. And Bonnie can start the slideshow and sorry, we didn't bring you popcorn.
All right. I guess Arcadis, they came in and they went through the plant and they're all the way done with their study of like what we need, their recommendations except for the financial part. That's what they got the report yet. So I guess I had, this was from a couple of years ago. I think I come up here, probably two years ago. But it's about to say nothing's really changed. So, so this is what we really needed at the plant. That just says that, I think it was built in thirty-nine and then two thousand was the last major update. There's, that's the plant. Our average flow is like three point two-five or three point four million gallons, I guess is the design flow. We can go up to seven million gallons per day. We talked, and they're giving us an option for making our plant larger so we can accept more load in case there would be any expansion in town with factories. But it gets pretty costly once you start seeing the numbers for that. So we kind of got a couple of options. The lift station, I guess the piping is all, I think it was thirty-nine to, or sixty?
Sixty.
Sixty? And a lot of it's original, so we need a lot of pipe. And I think there's more pictures on the next slide, yeah. We got a lot of corroded pipes. The ventilation is not, there's no ventilation down there, so the pipes all corrode. There's our bar screen, there's more of the piping that needs replaced.
Now, that's, that one pipe, that one pipe showed going off the wall. That's the flow coming out of the pumps from the lift station, correct?
Yes.
Feed the plant.
Yes, so if that would burst, our pumps are in the basement and it would be catastrophic.
That's because there's some sixty, so.
Yeah.
Tim, tell them how big the bar screen is roughly.
The bar screen will, it goes down thirty-five foot. I don't know if you go back a couple, Bonnie, you can see the top of it.
One more.
Yeah. One more.
Other way.
Other way. Yes, right here. That's the top of the bar screen. So it's, the flow's coming in and it's taking all the two-by-fours. All the, yeah, sticks. And with our combined sewer, we get a lot of that. So it's taking all that toilet paper and stuff and then it presses it into a dumpster. But so that's like our first line of defense on the pumps. It's thirty-five foot down. We did, we just had it rebuilt. It was a hundred and, I think, sixty-some thousand dollars to rebuild it. But they figure it's gonna be five years before we get a plant, we needed it rebuilt, so.
Those pumps there, their pumps there, you don't mind if I talk?
Nope, go ahead. No, no.
Are below the level of the water on that other side of the wall.
Yes, yeah.
There's a, there's a head of water about maybe ten feet above that in there. So if all those things would ever, if that wall would happen to spring a leak, that could be a lot of problems too there, so. And Arcadis has.
Yes, and we could, I talked about, one of the options is they want to cut a hole in this wall and flood this side out and put submersible pumps in. So that's one of their options. And that's kind of one of the cheaper options, so that's kind of one we were needing for us.
They'd have to take all those pumps out of there, of course.
So they're going to be removing everything, cutting a hole into the.
And then flood that side, yes, yes. The administration building, this is our break room. You can see the MCCs, the control panels, and we're sitting right beside them. There was, one time there was an arc flash and it was pretty bad. So I don't know, I don't know about the electrical codes, but I just don't think that that's probably right. So they're looking at some updates in the administration building. That's our grit chamber. The concrete's all deteriorating. But they want to repurpose the grit chamber, they want to use that. Below grade level is really good. I mean, below the water level, it's in good shape. It's just everything above where the freezing and thawing is really, is really bad. Yeah, and the sulfur gases getting to it, yes. So they, so they probably only do some concrete patching or even maybe cut and then report the top. Same thing, concrete, our slide gates, a lot of them don't seal up correctly. Our piping, a lot of it's kind of shifted and not real great. Those are our airlines too, that. And you can see the concrete there is pretty bad. Along the whole top, it's just. Same thing, the primary tanks, the concrete, it's just, it's just above ground level is about on all the concrete.
What happened in, in two thousand, I believe it was, they, I know in nineteen eighty, in eighty-eight, they put fiberglass coating around all that stuff. And that was above drowning and that stuff didn't last at all.
No, that's all peeling and then it's starting off. There must, slide must not have come here. Oh, there's some windows and doors, a lot of the windows and doors need replaced out there.
Eh, flexible paint. Born in.
There's same thing, the concrete on the aeration tank. With their, one of their proposals is they want to add, I think, like four more aeration tanks. But it's, it's pretty costly. So I think we're probably gonna keep the plant about the same or suggest keeping the plant about the same.
Upgrade it really?
Yeah, then upgrading the, this high rate treatment, add the extra flow. The blower building, the roof, we actually did get the roof, we put tin on the roof a year ago. So that's been done. More of the piping is, is not bad. That's our filter building. That, that building, I think, was eighty-eight and it, there's a lot, a lot of stuff wrong in that building. A lot of the valves don't work. There's baffles in there that keep the sand in, those are all falling off. A lot of the sand's missing, there's under drains, airlines that are burst or busted.
Control.
Control ghetto, yeah.
Parts for.
Yeah, and we can't put it in automatic, we gotta do it manually. So actually, if we would get a big flow and the filters would go up, we would actually, it would overflow out the front and we'd want to know it because we don't have any automatic controls on it. So they're suggesting actually getting, that's one thing that they would totally replace. They wanna, they're suggesting to tear that down and to put these disc filters in, that would be ground level. So it would actually change, or save us, see, we're pumping it up about fifteen foot. So we wouldn't have to have those pumps, so it's gonna save us on energy by having these filters at ground level. There's inside, there's the control panels, that's a cell.
Roof looks like crazy, doesn't it?
Yeah, the roof, the moisture knocked all the insulation down. Digestor, a lot of the concrete on the digester, the ringer on the top needs all replaced. The one actually, but the one digester we did replace, that was what? Probably like nineteen, or twenty fifteen, maybe, something like that?
Maybe twenty, yeah, around twenty.
Yeah, they did replace one, one of the top rings. That's inside. The digester, it's all, a lot of moisture problems. That's our sludge press, but that actually is pretty neat, that works pretty good. There's a big chunk of concrete on the digester that's, that's not peeling. I guess the asphalt to the driveway out there is shot. Well, if you guys know, if that's a compo site, it's, it's pretty bad. Some of our, there's a big slide gate that doesn't work in the front of the plant and concrete. Our phosphorus level did drop, but our permit, but we were just adding more chemicals, so that wasn't too big of a deal. It dropped a little bit, but we're way after that. There's a drying bed. They probably should be re, not a lot of work there, they maybe need new sand in them. There's some concrete on one of the tanks, it's really bad.
That tank's been there since thirty-nine.
That's what we, I guess we poured, we poured that in-house, right in front of the sludge load out. There's asphalt, as you can see at the plant, but the plant's asphalt probably may be a little worse than the road in some spots. Yeah, that's it.
That's it, going out. Anybody have any questions for Tim? It's not very rich.
Well, their original estimate, if we upgrade the plant to ten million gallons a day and add a high rate treatment and we add more loading so we can have more factories in town, it was fifty-four million. But we're, we kind of, me and kind of their lead engineer have talked and we're thinking maybe around a half of that here, twenty-five million of what we could really, what we probably need in the next ten years. With, and that would satisfy EPA too with the next phase, and that's the last ten years.
It wasn't ten years, was it? Five to seven, I guess it's whatever.
But we're asking for ten.
Yeah.
We're gonna ask, if we put this kind of money, we want ten years.
What, what would a new plant cost? Brand new?
They really, I guess I didn't go through all the, I mean, they do have all the options. They're saying though, a new plant, they're gonna have to revisit it in twenty to thirty years, just like you would if we repurposed this. They say there's really.
No advantage.
No advantage, the only advantage is you're fitting some of the new, new technology into that old space. So the maintenance or the operator friendly maybe not be as nice because you don't have a lot of room, you know, they're trying to stick a bar screen in an area that's not really, you know, it's really not that size. Basically, that's the only really disadvantage to repurposing some of these tanks.
I, I think they mentioned, you talked to me, it was an estimate of sixty-five million for a new plant, I remember that.
I thought it was seventy.
Yes, yes. The other, too, Tim, Jeff, if we would approve this, if you guys would approve this tomorrow, you're still looking at how many years before they would, you're probably looking at three to, three years before they'd even start, two to three years?
Yeah, I think whether I say the engineering would be a year and then permits from EPA would probably be, I would say two would be the shortest, I would say.
And then probably another year or so to complete it, so you might be looking at four to five years.
Yes.
You know, so.
So I think that's kind of why we're wanting to ten years too, because once we get it completed, we're gonna be at the end of the five years for the Phase Two. Because we've completed Phase One and we've got an administrative order that was signed in fifteen, I think.
Seventeen.
Seventeen? Yeah, so we've done the first phase, the first five years. Now we've submitted our plan for the second five years. But it's the high rate treatment, which we really had to talk about. The high rate treatment is, it's, it's the filters to, and the water's gonna flow through them quickly and it's just gonna clean it, it's not gonna clean it to what we do right now, it's gonna partially clean it. So we're, we're at like four milligrams per liter of suspended solids is what we, when we put it into the river. And what comes into plan is about a hundred and they want us to get down to thirty with the high rate treatment. So we would just have to partially clean it and then send it on its way.
Now, if you, if you increase the flow, it does not open a new can of worms also. If you increase it at the plant itself, don't you gotta go through that anti-dag rules that the EPA has?
Yes.
And that costs a lot more, a lot more time to do something?
Yes, but they're talking maybe using two outfalls.
Oh, okay.
So if they use two outfalls, if they keep them separate.
Okay.
Instead of combined in them, or vice versa, one of the ways, I think they can get around that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
So you're saying, you're saying ten years? And out of the ten years, will, if we submit this plan to the EPA, we're saying that this project will be completed at the tenth year, starting now?
No, we're saying that we've committed this twenty-one million to the CSO, because this is helping with this CSO, the CSOs. So we're saying the twenty-one million or whatever, I guess it was, there's different options. That's what we gotta spend in the ten years. So then there's a new ten years after that where we have to do separation or whatever. So this is really only buying us time. In Phase Two, it says that we need to reduce our CSO discharge by fifty percent. The CSOs, the CSOs are combined sewers. So when it rains, you know, you get the water going in and then it all, then it goes out, outfalls, there's twenty around twenty of them along the river that they just go right out. And that's combined sewage. So they want us to reduce that by fifty percent in this next phase. The high rate treatment gets us there. Gets us to, will get us the fifty percent reduction. Because it's gonna go through that before it goes to the outfalls.
So what is going to be, I guess, the yearly ask, somebody has to put in the budget?
Well, that's what they're doing now, they're, they're looking at, they're looking at how much the rates would need to be increased to pay, to pay for everything.
So they're gonna come in in July, catch it up.
Okay.
If you don't have anything else, we'll hit back. Thank you, Tim.
You guys got any other questions about it? I mean, I know it's a lot.
Probably will.
Yeah. Gotta let process. Well, bring them when we bring Arcadis in, because.
They're, they're the experts.
Yeah, we want to draw them and make sure you guys all understand.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Tim or anything? If not, um.
We're, we're counting, I don't know if you mentioned, I got here a little bit late, but we're counting on, you know, grants. I don't, did you bring that up?
No. That's kind of part of their financial study, right?
Right. Yeah, so when we say twenty-five million, you know, we're counting on, like we did with the water treatment plant, low interest loans or, or grants or forgivable principal, those types of things, so. Yeah, so it sounds, it sounds like, it is a lot of money, obviously it is a lot of money. We just invested twenty-five million dollars in the water plant, we paid off, I think we're in our sixth year now of a twenty-year loan. So we're, you know, we're substantially into that. But it does burden the current population, but, you know, something's gotta be done, so. But we're counting on, there's a lot of federal money right now and as we've talked to Arcadis, they were optimistic that we would, you know, be able to get, procure some of things, those grants and forgivable loans, so. Well, and then they're here on the twentieth of July, the second Thursday of July for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. With this being said, I think at this point, Service Committee can possibly move this on to Finance. So that, because the financial part's gonna be in their, in their corner anyhow, so. I'd like to entertain a motion to move this over to Finance Committee for tonight, later on tonight.
Would it, why would it need to go to Finance if we don't know what?
Well, they have to, they're the ones that are gonna be talking about that. We're gonna know about it in July twentieth, no? So that they, they'll be ready to go with it on deciding what they want to do on the financial part of it. Service can't do much with it now, but we, basically, it's, it's in financial hands, correct, Jeff?
Well, yeah, Service is just gonna approve us and move forward.
Yeah.
To bring in Arcadis to talk about how it's gonna get paid for through the financing. Do we need, it's already in Finance Committee, do we even need to do anything with it? I mean, it's already there. Well, you guys need to approve it.
I don't think it is, the new, the new plant financial part isn't, what?
It says the EPA consent to screen Phase Two.
Yeah, but it's, it's gotta be after us, we do it.
Okay. Just go through the Providence Committee first.
Let's go to this committee first.
Brian? Am I saying that incorrect?
We just have to move it on, don't we?
And then Finance decides if they want to do anything with their committee. It doesn't hurt.
Yeah, I need a motion to move it to Finance, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we got a motion from Steve, or from Bretton. Steve seconds it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So, before you move on.
Yeah.
So you've just approved this and you don't even know.
Well, we, our part of it's over, the Service part is. It goes to Finance now, as far as the, as financing it. I mean, we're, there's nothing we can do anyhow at this point.
Well, no, I, Dan, questioning, I think we need to make sure we're all on the same page here.
We're on the same page, yeah.
Well, I mean, when Finance comes in and says, we want to spend sixty-seven million, are you guys gonna be mad?
Well, then it has to come back to full council, right?
Has to come to full council, yeah, we'll discuss it then.
I'm just saying, all the particulars.
It doesn't matter if we're mad or not, we gotta do what we gotta do.
No, I'm just saying.
But what can happen?
Is that what you want?
Dan. What can happen on Finance if, if Arcadis comes back and says, we wanna, we're gonna do the high rate treatment, we're gonna do the repairs at his plant, that can come back to Service again and we can approve that and move it on. But right now, we're just moving to Financial to do the study on it, to look at the study and see where we're at, right? Isn't that right, Mayor?
That's all I was trying to say. I do now.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I would follow, maybe you don't need to move it to Finance until they come into the committee meeting.
That was my question.
And then you guys can do it then and say, okay, we're gonna move it on, it's up to Finance to pick which direction we want to go.
It doesn't matter, because Finance won't do anything until it's what it calls.
Right, and that's what they'll be discussing.
It doesn't matter.
What's the difference, we do it tonight or do it when they're here?
It doesn't matter, you guys do what you want.
I mean.
No, we try to get the best.
Yeah.
You know.
Bretton brought a point, it's gotta come back and everybody's gotta vote on it.
Yeah.
Full council, yeah, full council, so. It's just, what you just did there was allow Finance to talk about it, right? And they'll vote on it and then if they approve it, it comes back for you guys for a full vote.
Yeah, yeah.
You're not gonna spend a dollar without your approval, right?
Okay, well, we can table it if we want to, I don't really care. We got a motion, we need, we guys haven't voted on it yet. Okay, all those in favor, use your sign, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, carried, we're on. Okay, it says appointment of a Stormwater Utility Appeals Board. You know what that is, Mayor?
Yes, we have a, starting in a storm, well, we have a Stormwater Appeals Board, we have a couple of new members. We haven't had a meeting in quite a while because we haven't had anybody appealing their stormwater bill, but now we have two. So we have to have a meeting and then we just were making sure we had the full amount of members on, which hadn't, hadn't been on.
Do you know who they're gonna be?
Yeah, Tony Sheets is one of them. Brian, do you remember that one?
No, I don't know.
Say, I think Tony. Yes, Kelly. Can you hang on there a minute?
What was actually, what's it referred to there, just legislation accepting?
Says we have to make appointment to it, I don't know.
Just says appointments to the Stormwater Utility Appeals Board.
Okay.
Well, that would be. I pointed Tony Sheets, I just, I kept, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it was two.
Oh, well.
Let me ask Kelly.
We'll do it later. Okay, we'll move on. County line water, water line expansion, Jeff, what's that?
Okay, and Mr. Gerner, jump in if I misspeak here, or Kaylee, the auditor, we've been, we met with the commissioners last week, going through, trying to make the money flow from the commissioners to the city. And the commissioners would like us to take over all the bidding on the three projects, which are Stetzer Road six oh two, the line in the sulfur springs on Locust Grove, and then the Osso, Osso project, which won't be done until two thousand twenty-four. So we had to go back through the agreement we had with them, which we all signed off on, said this is great. They had to change it per their auditor and through their finance fiscal officer. And some of the amounts have changed. And so what we need to do is do a new agreement with them. And they're still covering the same amount of money in every project. But the total amount now that they're, are gonna give us is two million eight hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and forty dollars. Which before it was roughly three million one hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty dollars. But what they did is we separated the engineering fees and the EPA fees, that they've already paid part of them. So we had them on the phone yesterday and today. And they're gonna go ahead and continue to pay the engineering fees and the EPA fees, they're paying for that separate, which that deducted off the three million one hundred and twenty-three thousand. So now we just need to enter into a new agreement with them. And the new amount on their agreement was two million eight hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and forty dollars. And then this will also allow me to go out to bid for Stetzer Road and six oh two, as it's ready to go right now. So they're still contributing their share, we still have ours in our budget. So we just need to approve, we need to go out tonight, if you guys would put it to Finance tonight. But we just need legislation, right, Mr. Gerner, to approve the new agreement?
Yeah, so Service just has to approve the project and move it to Finance. And then Finance has to approve, accepting the two hundred and eighty-three, two million eight hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and forty. And then the legislation specifically outlines which piece, or how much money goes to each project. And then because Stetzer Road project is ready, there would be a second piece authorizing the Service Safety Director to go out to bid for the one million two hundred and six or two hundred and eight.
Two hundred and six thousand.
Right, and start the Stetzer Road six oh two project.
And then I think if I say this right, we, Joyce was in and Kaylee, she called it an amended certificate. That she'll have to appropriate the money per se on the water.
Yeah, in order for us to bring the money into the budget as like, you know, it's promised to us by the commissioners, I have to send an amended certificate, which I did today, to the county auditor so they can say, okay, the funds are promised, they'll be there, and that way we can put them in the budget, knowing that it'll be there once it's reimbursed to us.
So what happens is when a bill comes in, when they start the project, we actually pay that bill out of that line item, send it to the commissioners, because they have to track all this for their local recovery act money. And then they'll cut us a check for that amount. So Joyce said, most of the time, by the time we pay it and we send it over to the commissioners, we'll get that check before our check even gets cashed. So we'll do that on a PO until. So, and we'll do that on a PO until we're out of their money, and then we'll kick in ours. Is that correct, Kaylee?
That's how I understood it, yes.
Does it stand up? Okay, so we need a motion to move it to Finance, correct? So I need a motion to approve this project and move it to Finance?
I'll make a motion to move it to Finance.
A motion from Steve, seconded by Bretton. All vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay. What?
So you wanna approve Tony Sheets as my appointment to the Stormwater Water Appeals Board, if you would?
Okay.
Just the one?
Just the one.
Okay. Okay, I need a motion to recommend, uh, legislation to, to appoint Tony Sheets to the Stormwater Utility Appeals Board, you need this as emergency, Mayor?
So I don't think you need legislation, I think you guys just need to approve the mayor.
Still had me a legislation board.
I don't think on the mayor's appointments, you would, just approval.
Let's prove it, a motion to approve it, by somebody.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Bretton. Steve seconded, all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, that's done. Okay, any more open projects? Any more public participation from anybody?
Uh, Terry?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, if any of you guys wanna come out and take a look, you guys are more than welcome to come out. We're seven to three every day, and Saturday and Sunday, if you want, if you get ahold of me and I'll come out there, and we can meet out there, if you need to do it on Saturday or something.
Good.
It is truly amazing, if you see what it is, when it comes in and when it goes out into the river, it's TMI. I didn't say nothing, I'm just saying it's amazing, what you put it through, and it gets back to where it is, and then the animals take care of it after that.
Okay. Seeing no, no more, adjourn this meeting at six thirty-eight.
Committee June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. I'd like to call Health and Safety to order, Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, Steve Young, myself as acting chair. Kevin Myers is absent today. Called order at six thirty-four. Public participation? Seeing none, I need the approval of amendments from the June eighth.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Mark, second from Dan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motorized modes of transportation, what we got going on there?
Um, so I've submitted a couple different letters, and I think the main point that I keep coming back to is, regardless of what sort of contraption it is, you still have to follow the rules of the road. You have to stop at stop signs, red lights, all of that good stuff, use turn signals or hand signals. I mean, that's the law for pedal bikes, as well as those electric bikes, motorized, anything with a, not motor, but anything with a gas engine, you have to be licensed, either have your moped license, or depending on what it is, you have to be properly licensed and those are registered. So I think, as of now, I would like to talk to, or invite the chief of the, of Police Department, or one of the lieutenants or patrolmen to come and discuss enforcement options, because the laws on the book that are currently there would prevent, and I think one of the main complaints is the proliferation of these motorized vehicles, and they're not following the standard traffic laws. They're flying out of alleys without yielding to oncoming traffic, they're not stopping at stoplights and those types of things. So I think maybe talking to the Police Department about further methods or modes of enforcement of those traffic laws. But, I mean, you have the ability to ban or outlaw motorized vehicles on roadways, on bike paths, in through alleys. I don't know that you would necessarily, I mean, that would be up to council if they wanted to do that, but some of those people, generally, that's their mode of transportation, as such as some of the elderly or handicapped, that's, they're using those, and I think more of, the bigger problem is when you have citizens that are just sort of not obeying the traffic laws, but I don't know, I know that Mark brought this up, I don't know what your thoughts are.
Well, my thoughts are that I've seen several times, I didn't know at least four times, I've seen a gentleman out on East Mansfield, on the walkway section of the road, with a, might as well say, one of those real short motorbikes, as in a dirt bike type, flying at a good rate of speed, faster than what the traffic was going, going down that walkway and going off behind the Burger King area. I don't know which way that person ended up, but I've seen four different times going out to Walmart, or out in that vicinity, I didn't see him go in there, I saw him in between Burger King and the Walmart areas, I was coming from work or going out that way myself, let alone, like I just said, I saw a four-wheeler, the day of the car show, right over here, a smaller one with two juveniles on it with no license plate. I'm not sure if they had helmets, because I wasn't looking that close, but I saw it sitting right over here at the Sunoco at the corner of Hopely and Walnut.
Right, and so what you're referring to, both of those vehicles would need to be registered or licensed, registered, correct? And they're not then legally able to be on roadways, because they have gas combustion engines. And further, like, I mean, you would have to follow the rules of the road, so I'm not allowed to pass you on the right side of the road in a no-passing zone, regardless of what vehicle I'm in.
That's correct.
So that's my point, like, the laws currently exist, maybe one option would be, we look at better enforcement.
I just wanted to.
Impounding vehicles.
Work with the Police Department somehow, even if, even if we, if they feel that we need to stiffen the penalties.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not in disagreement to stiffen the penalties, especially when certain ones are doing this that I've observed, and you know they are no need to have that vehicle to get as their own mode of transportation.
Yeah.
Did you say the, the bike was electric that was going out to Walmart?
No.
So it was a gas?
Oh, no, no, it was one of those.
Dirt bike.
One of those dirt bikes that's short to the ground, and he was an adult male on there.
Yeah, so I mean, it's just, so it's just violating the law in general, I mean, there's no, I mean, it doesn't really fall in line with this, they're just violating the law.
Right, but, but the thing is, like I said the other night, we need to give the Police Department the tools to enforce this, whether it be, as you, and I don't know what the legality of that is, is impounding their vehicle. I'm not saying you get caught doing something, but if you repeatedly do, you know, is it three strikes, you're out, and you lose your little motorbike that you're running up and down? Or is it, you know, is a fifteen-dollar fine for riding on the sidewalk not enough, you know, or whatever the fine is? We used to have, you know, no skateboards uptown, but when the new, new downtown was built, all those signs disappeared, the two-hour parking and the no skateboards and all that, so there's probably a generation that doesn't even realize that you're not supposed to ride bikes and, and skateboards.
On the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk, so giving the tools to the Police Department is putting, notifying, you know, somehow notifying the public that this is, you know, whether it be signs or, you know, whatever, but you can't just, you know, you can't blame the people if they're doing things illegal if they haven't picked up and read about it, or.
Ignorance of the law is no defense.
It's no defense, right, right, it's no, it's no defense, but.
Notification and publication and a little awareness goes a long way.
Yeah.
I would say I agree with what you're saying, we need to bring in either the chief or a representative and say, what tools do you have, and what tools would you have?
Right.
Give us your wish list, and then we can make that happen.
I agree, that's what we need to do, just to curtail this somehow for people without knowledge or ignorance, you know, when somebody tries to just ignore the law.
I'm just kidding.
I mean, we do Safety Town for, what, four or five-year-olds, maybe we need to do it for the, you know, twelve and thirteen and fourteen-year-olds, you know, and, and then maybe even when they start driving, maybe we need to do something, but.
So, we just wait until we get someone to come back in, meet us for?
Yeah, I'll speak with Chief Austinheimer, and try to get him to come to, him or a representative to either a council meeting or a committee meeting to talk about ways.
Committee meeting would be really good.
Committee meeting.
Yeah.
And we're not limited on time, though.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just know that there are a lot of, a lot of what I've come across is we've sort of ignored or overlooked some of these illegalities, 'cause A, we don't see them, and, and we have limited resources and limited officers on the roads, and, you know, but it's definitely worth talking about.
All right, anything else on that subject? Okay, any projects to discuss?
Well, I don't, I, I don't know if it's open projects, but this, has anybody heard anything about the signs for the Dora? Yeah.
So I spoke with the Chamber of Commerce, and they referred me to the partnership who sort of said, well, we were helping you and assisting you, but, I mean, and we'd be willing to meet and discuss whatever, so then I went back and read the application, and I think the original application indicated that the Chamber of Commerce would be the holder of the cups, and then charge a fee based upon those cups, and then they would provide the city with a portion necessary for us to maintain the Dora, which I suppose then means that maybe it's our responsibility to erect these signs with the funding of the chamber through the sale of the cups. So I followed up with Avery, I can't remember her last name, at the Chamber of Commerce, and haven't heard back from her, but work in progress, but yeah, does need to get completed.
Okay. Well, we had the little cardboard signs.
We did, I don't know.
Those all disappeared, I know our couples have, but.
Yeah, those disappeared, and it is something that, we put the cardboard signs up, I believe, based upon, it was a trial period.
Trial, right.
And I know part of the issue, I mean, Ms. Ferner was the prior chamber director, and she moved on, and so now the new chamber director wasn't involved in the initial planning and rollout of that, so catching them up to speed, but work in progress.
All right, I'm just trying to help you out here.
I appreciate that. You got a post hole digger?
I do, too, actually.
Just kidding. But I did bring, yeah, so this sign, roughly the boundaries and where the signs could be or should be located.
That'd be a good service project, someone to go around, put those up, once, once you got the, you know, maybe like some, somebody who like owed the courts some money or something.
We'll make the violators of the motorbikes to.
Yeah, there we go.
Put the signs up. Okay. Any public participation for Health and Safety? Seeing none, I will adjourn at six forty-six. Plating Committee, June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, I'll call plating to order at six forty-seven, members present, Dan Wireball, Terry Spiegel, myself chair, Kevin Myers is absent. Is there any public participation? None being. You have before you the June eighth regular plating committee minutes.
Make most accept those.
Second. There's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 We have our open projects. We don't have to discuss them tonight, but if you know of anything you'd like to bring up, let's try to close them if we can. Ah, if there's nothing else, public participation, none? Six, I'll adjourn at six forty-eight.
Economic Development Committee, June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
I'd like to call Economic Development to order at six forty-nine PM. Members present, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself chair, Sierra and Sherik is absent. Like to open the floor for public participation. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from the May eighteen, two thousand twenty-three Regular Economic Development Committee meeting.
So.
Second. First from Mark and a second from Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Next would be the open projects, any discussion on that? Okay, so last on the list is public participation. Seeing none, we will adjourn at six forty-nine.
Finance Committee, point eight million dollars, June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
Oh, ready, all right, Finance Committee, let's call Finance Committee to order at six fifty-one. Members present, Mark McKeever, Terry Spiegel, myself chair, Kevin Myers is absent. Any public participation for Finance Committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from April twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, the regular Finance Committee meeting. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion from Terry, second from Mark, to approve those minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, did, did we need to talk about the NEF reservoir, or do we need to? Well, I mean, it's gonna bounce back and forth, but, yeah, I guess.
No, we'll just wait till the next.
We'll wait, all right. Then we're, we talked about the county water line expansion, you're wanting us to allow you to go out to bid, right?
You need one piece of legislation accepting two million eight hundred and.
Once we get that, then he can go out to bid, huh?
So, yeah, you need two pieces, one piece accepting the money from the county, authorizing the Public Service Safety Director to accept that money, and authorizing the auditor to create a fund to put that money in, and then it specifically breaks down the prices for each project that can be used out of that money accepted from the county. That would be one piece of legislation, and you need that as an emergency, and then your second piece of legislation would be authorizing the Public Service Safety Director to go out for bid on the Stetser Road six oh two project, not to exceed one million two hundred and six thousand.
Two hundred and six thousand, one million?
One million two hundred and six thousand.
And I just have contingency built into that.
Okay, so first we need to create the fund, right?
First you need to accept the money and create the fund.
Right, so I need a motion to, or, I guess I don't, yeah.
I'll make a motion as an emergency to accept the.
For legislation accepting.
For accepting the money from the county, and also for creating the fund for the exception of, accepting of the money.
I'll second.
And Terry will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that was those two or one, that was one.
Did you say you wanted to request legislation for it, though? I don't think you did.
As an emergency, yeah.
I didn't hear you say that.
Yeah. Yeah, he was saying it really slow.
I said for, as in emergency, accepting legislation for, accepting the money from the county, and also forming the fund, creation of two seventy local fiscal recovery special revenue fund, two thousand twenty-three, to form that for the. to form that for the money.
And Terry seconds that.
I second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, just to make sure, now I need.
One moment, please, Mr. Wagner.
You do have in there not to exceed 2.83, correct?
Well, the money, we're, it, we're just.
We're just accepting the money.
Accepting the money, whatever they give us, if they wanna give us more, we'll take it, won't we?
Well, yeah, that's, that's, that ain't gonna happen if they have a cap.
Yeah. I'll talk to you.
That's, that's in.
I'll talk to you.
I'll take it.
I think we're good.
We're good, okay.
All right.
So then, now this one, we're gonna put a cap on.
This is more specific.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we need a motion to, to, for the service director to go out to bid for these county water line expansion projects not to exceed $1,206,000.
For Stetzer Road and 602.
For Stetzer Road, it's, yeah, that's specifically Stetzer Road and 602 projects, do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion as an emergency for the service safety director to go out for bid, not to exceed the dollar amount as stated for Stetzer Road and 602, State House 602.
I'll hold second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we need to talk about the US EPA consent decree or not? Nothing, we don't have anything on that, okay? Open projects in the finance depart, or finance?
We do have to, sorry.
Oh, we have to do this appropriations, don't we?
Yes, yes, so we do have to appropriate $2,831,500, sorry, $2,831,540 into the, uh, new local fiscal recovery special revenue fund 2023. And we're want to put that all in the other, uh, under general government other uses line.
I'll make a motion, we do what you just said.
Okay, perfect.
You request legislation to do that as an emergency, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, and that is done. Now, any open, anything else, any open projects you need to talk about, uh, any more public participation? No, okay, that's the end of, uh, that's the end of that, so I guess, uh, I call recess it, what, 6:57?